Today being September 7, 2016, the Cheltenham Planning Board will open up for our meetings. We have some payroll bills to do. We have payrolls for Jane and Alan from 9:12 to 9:17. 9:19 to 9:24, 9:26, 10-1, 10-3, and 10-8. Do you have a motion to accept the payrolls for that time, Frank?
No, move to the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have some planning board bills. We have, um, we have a bill for $229.70 for affordable housing study. We have a reimbursement for a cellphone of $93.47. Reimbursement for a conference, $220. And we have one from the Massachusetts Association of Planning Directors. All the invoices are included here. The total amount comes to $715.17. We have another one for postage of $44.82. And we have one from Graves Engineering, which consists of 14 invoices. They're all included here, and the invoices come up to $8,418.20. Do you have a motion to accept the bills as read?
No, move to the second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have some correspondence here. They're for site visit reports from Graves Engineering. One is for the Treehouse Brewery. Graves Engineering was on-site to inspect the progress of construction of the brewery and retail sale facility on previously undeveloped property located at Oxters, Sturbridge Road, Route 20 in Cheltenham. Upon arrival, I met with Bryant from Northeast Construction to review the work today, and the following was observed. This time, Northeast Construction does not have a date set for when drainage insulation will commence, however, the drainage pipe instructions are on-site. Graves has included a lot of nice colored pictures here. I'd like to pass it around so you guys can see what Graves have been doing for us out of Treehouse Brewery. We have another one from Graves Engineering for our income solar facility. Graves Engineering was on-site to observe the process of construction of a 4.0 megawatt ground-mounted photorey facility at income property at 294 Southridge Road. Upon arrival, I met with Joe from ProTech to review the work. Today, I observed the following. Two of the three outlet control structures are set at the time of my visit. The ProTech was placing riprap on the spillways of the last remaining basins, C2 and CD. Infiltration beds were being inspected at B1, B2, BC, 2D, 3A, 3E. Again, Graves has given us a lot of photographs of what his visits have been, which is a great help. We have some other correspondence. One is from the, I guess this will be from the Sewer Commission, Alan?
Yeah, you were CC'd, and I'll just briefly mention it. Kevin is on your agenda for zone change discussion in a few minutes, but if you haven't met Kevin Pecos, he's the interim water sewer department controller. And he CC'd us on some correspondence to Treehouse Brewery about design requirements for water discharge processing, so it's just in your file as a CC. He'll deal directly with Treehouse on that.
Our seller has a whole house hazardous waste day, fluction day. It's coming up on Saturday, September 24, 2016, from 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. This will be at 165 Bearfoot Road across from the landfill. The Cheltenham Food Clinic, Thursday, October 6, 2016, hours up from 10:30 to 12:00 p.m. The Cheltenham Senior Center at 37 Main Street, Cheltenham. Public notice from the zoning board of appeals, the town of Cheltenham, in accordance with the zoning bylaws, you are hereby notified of a public hearing on September 20, 2016. The petitioner seeks to add a four-season room, enlarge the kitchen, redo existing walkways, and add deck to steps. They have a hearing coming up. The Lester Zoning Board of Appeals had a hearing on August 10, 2016. The project was located at 182 Paxton Street, Lester. To build a one-family home, the builder was going to be CB Blair developer, and the zoning board of appeals denied the variance that they were seeking. And that's different correspondence. It's not quite 7:15 for a public hearing. Alan, do you have anything quick you'd like to go over before we do?
Sure. Why don't we meet with Kevin right now? If you don't mind, come on, let me see. I'll introduce him, give a quick summary overview, and then Kevin can add to it or answer any questions. I've already introduced who he is, and I put in your packet with a brief explanation. He had come to me recently on behalf of the Water Sewer Commission as they work to expand both the water infrastructure and the sewer infrastructure between not just piping but also pump stations here and there. They're running into some dilemmas with the zoning bylaw. One is, on the sewer side, we don't even reference it. If on the water side, we have some pump station references about performance standards, size of lot, frontage and such. What they went through a few years ago was a problem with a water pump station. They had to go to the zoning board and get a variance because whoever wrote the zoning bylaw back in '87 when they put it in did not differentiate between lot requirements for pump stations and other uses, so literally you need a house lot. So they had to go, obviously it makes sense, as you know, in any community, a lot of your sewerage and water infrastructure are on smaller lots. You fit them in as you design your system and expand the system. So he had asked for my advice, and we went through some drafts. I assisted him on language, put it in your packet about, they'd like to sponsor two warrant articles. One is related to water sewerage, and one is related to water system, one is related to sewerage. The four items in front of you, two of them are related to one and two the other. Just to jump ahead procedure, what I suggested to Kevin is, it's the fall town meeting, which is legally a special town meeting, and under Massachusetts law, a regular town meeting, you only need a handful of signatures to put a petition. But a non-planning board entity needs 200 signatures, so your policy has always been, meet with someone for a fall petition. If you're supportive or okay with it, then you would submit it on their behalf rather than someone going out and getting 200. So that's my overview of what it is. You can add anything specific if you'd like to. The boy can ask any questions, but again, to sum up, what they're proposing is two warrant articles, one water, one sewerage, and the details are in front of you of, that would allow them to logically engineer and design the pump stations, the infrastructure, without getting stuck with the generality that gets you into larger lots and setback and coverage difficulties that really weren't designed for infrastructure but are designed for houses and non-residential buildings, so to speak.
Okay, Karen.
Well, nice meeting you all.
Nice meeting you too.
And thank you for taking me early. I hate getting home sooner than I'm supposed to. No, I don't. Alan was very, very helpful to me and to the Water Sewer Commission in assisting us with taking my crude draft and redrafting it into actual understandable zoning amendment language. Commission is really looking for relief from the dimensional requirements because one of the sites that we're looking at right now for pump station connection with the ExxonMobil project is pretty constricted due to those dimensional requirements, the specific side and front and real lot setback as well as proximity to residential dwelling. Most of the time, these public infrastructure structures are determined by engineering. It's not really a matter of where we'd like to put it, it's not where we must put it. And so if they're required to go in another location, it really can be very inhibited to the ability of Water Sewer Commission to provide water and sewer services to the residents. So what the petitioner seek to do in the case of the sewer is to provide some relief to that. It's not complete relief, but it's more relief than is coming in the case. In the case of water, since it's not even in the zoning bylaw right now, what Alan recommended, and I concur, and the Water Sewer Commission, by the way, have voted these, so they are in support, is to note that water is a public use, the table of principal use regulations, and then basically, having noted it, make it, give it essentially complete relief from dimensional requirements. The feeling of the commission was to have two articles, so the sewer is sort of one and water is another, and that way, you know, it wouldn't be, if for some reason, town meeting had some concerns about one or the other, they wouldn't, you know, neither would affect the other. I know you can also do that with a motion to divide the question, but the commission just felt it was clear, and it just said two articles. So that's what's presented to you, and happy to speak to the specifics in here, but I think Alan's already done a great job, so I think it's so happy to answer any questions that you have. Have a meeting with the Water Sewer Commission Monday night, and I will report back to them what you decide.
Sure, there's four paragraphs here.
Yeah.
Which ones will be for water, which ones will be in each article?
Number one, I have to relook at this because I have to actually look at the...
Number one and number two are the water.
The water, okay.
And three and four. We listed these out to come up with a language, but what would happen is, one and two would be their own article, and it would say, you know, regarding water, and three and four would be their own article related to sewer system. And again, what I'd recommend is, and it's the quirkiness of Massachusetts state zoning legislation, I recommend that at their request, because as Kevin said, they voted their request of this, that you submit on their behalf a cover letter explaining very briefly that, you know, you're requesting these to be placed on, you met with Kevin, it's requested by them. A non-planning board department cannot submit for zoning warrants, you know, so you're doing it for them.
48 has that quirky process of, the way you can go about getting these into the docket in the special is difficult, so if you would give the Water Sewer Commission your indulgence and support it, it prevents them having to petition for it and go through all sorts of hoops.
It makes sense to support it, and it goes, kind of goes along with the master plan to, you know, bring water in, so I think there's no need not to.
And you'll hold the hearing before the town meeting, you know, unless you're doing everything.
Got to be a public hearing on this.
Yes, we can schedule both articles in one hearing evening, back-to-back, and you can take them concurrently. You know, I can run them both in the same ad, along with probably, possibly others too. One of our meetings prior to the town meeting, we can schedule, probably the first Wednesday of October, is probably what I was looking at right now.
The other night you do, we'll be there.
Would you like to make a motion that we support this article? Water Sewer Commission on their behalf.
And request the board select them to put on the agenda for a special town meeting.
Correct.
What I can do is, I can just split it into two, and basically, again, town council and the town select board office will do all the language for the intro and the warrant article. We just have to give them a cover letter saying that, you know, the water one is one and two, and the sewer one is three and four, and you've already got to see if the town will vote to amend the bylaw as follows, and that's all we have to say. They'll take it from there.
I can't help myself but write it in the town meeting, and I've been the town manager for 40 years.
That's okay.
I don't hold that against me. I'm retired now, but it's just natural to let it.
That's okay. They'll have a cover letter from the chairman, and we'll CC on it. We'll get done by the end of the week.
Well, that's super. I gotta go find something to do for now. My wife's not expecting me, so. But thank you all very much, and nice meeting again. Thanks again to Alan, he really has been very helpful.
You're welcome. Glad to work with you.
Thank you.
Frank, I have a copy for the board I'll put on the table, and you can put that on over there. I think people can see it from there.
Being 7:15, notice of a public hearing of the Cheltenham Planning Board. According to section 200.7.1 and 207.2 of the Cheltenham zoning bylaw, the Cheltenham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, September 7, 2016, at 7:15 in the Planning Board office of the George C. McKinstry Building, 37 Main Street, Cheltenham, Mass. On a site plan application, Burton Engineering on behalf of Otis Land Management LLC, 125 Southridge Road, Cheltenham, Mass., 0157. Requesting approval of an amendment to previously approved site plan in order to designate business park to include a 9,000-square-foot office building, 20,800-square-foot warehouse, a 9,600-square-foot oil bulk storage building, and a 30,400-square-foot commercial self-storage facility on a 12.69-acre parcel located at Force Sturbridge Road, Route 20, accessory map, 27 block B, parcel 15. Said property is owned IG Industrial General. Copy of the site plan applications are available for inspection at the Planning Board office and in town clerk's office during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Alan, if you could start us off on this?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be as brief as possible in this first step. Just to explain to folks who are new to the process or who have been here before, this is a, under Massachusetts state and local zoning bylaw, this is an administrative site plan application, which means that the use is allowed. The planning board's responsibility and authority is on site design layout, stormwater management, erosion sedimentation, the layout of the site, the parking lot design, the driveways, landscaping, including parking lot landscaping and potential buffering or not, signage, lighting. We don't get into the interior of a building at all. It's the first night of this hearing. The board will continue it beyond this evening. I've had two different abutters who've spoken to me who've come in and looked at it, just to mention that in passing, and what will happen is, one thing we'll look at tonight, after the applicant gives an initial presentation from Burton Engineering, I'll do a summary of the planning board's engineer. The planning board, under state law, has our own engineer review the plan and advise the board. It's Burton Engineering from Oyster. Mike Andrade is our engineer. I have the Graves review report this evening that I'll summarize. That said, Frank, if you can introduce yourself initially because we're just starting, can you do roughly a five-minute or so overview generality? The board and anybody else may have questions or get into more as the hearing continues this evening, but if you can start, and then the chairman will take it from there.
Sure. So Frank DeCarri with Burton Engineering, engineer record for the project. Here this evening with Ralph Nichols, who's the owner of the project and developer of the project, also Cheltenham Oil. So the site here is 12.7 acres, located on the north side of Route 20, Sturbridge Road, between Griffin Road and old Sturbridge Road. The site was previously permitted for a commercial subdivision. The previous zoning was business enterprise own. When it was business enterprise own, in order to get multiple buildings on the lot, it needed to be subdivided. So there was a, about 10 years ago, 2006, I believe, there was a commercial subdivision approved for the project. Ralph kept the permit valid by requesting extensions on that subdivision, so there is a valid subdivision. Ralph has started doing some of the grading work up on the site as part of that subdivision approval. With the zone change to the industrial zoning, the subdivision was no longer required to do multiple buildings, and it also allowed a little bit of a redesign of what was a roadway. So this main site roadway here was a subdivision roadway. Within zone change, he was able to redesign that to, didn't have to necessarily meet subdivision standards, so that's why we came back in with a redesign of what we have now. So what we're proposing is a two-story office building, 4,500 square feet footprint, so 9,000 square feet, a bulk building for oil deliveries, so bulk oil storage, trucks drive around, fill up with oil, pull out. Warehouse with maybe, you know, a corner office in it, so we call it a warehouse with some office space. It hasn't been fully designed yet, but we wanted to allow for some office space in there. And the rear of the property would be self-storage with these units designated for car storage. So if guys have cars or girls have cars and they want to tinker on them, they have garage space that they can tinker on their car. It's not auto repair, but it is self-storage, designed for cars. Surrounding the property is wetlands to the east and residential properties to the west, as well as a couple of commercial properties. Along with the site being developed, there's also going to be improvements to Griffin Road. It's pretty steep, as most of you know, so it's going to be regraded a little bit and repaved and widened to allow for truck access in and out, as well as a force main, a water force main brought down Griffin Road and then up into the site to provide fire protection and domestic water service for those buildings. The sewer connection, all gravity down, tie into existing system and old Sturbridge Road. And for stormwater management, we're proposing two detention basins here and here to mitigate stormwater as a result of clearing the site and putting the buildings in parking, as well as an underground infiltration system up over here. So we are proposing some landscaping, as our committee's shown along here, to screen from the abutting residential properties, and we did leave, provide some tree plantings as well around the office parking area. That's it in a nutshell.
I do want to just clarify and expand one quick, very brief comment. You're right, I wouldn't use the word "commercial" for Ralph's previous one. What it was is, under the BEP zoning, he was still proposing an industrial park, but under the BEP, he was looking more for tenancy that would have been office as opposed to the current uses being proposed. That would have resulted in a much higher traffic impact with shifts of employees coming in as he leased to different corporate-type offices or R&amp;D type of thing. So I just wanted to clarify. Did you use the word "commercial," and it wasn't going to be a retail site?
Right. Thank you. And again, these three buildings, Ralph intends to use as part of Cheltenham Oil at some point. So phasing-wise, he'd like to phase the project. The bulk plant's the building that's going to go in first, and then storage building, and then office building will go in, and then the self-storage.
You were saying that there was going to be some regrading of Griffin Road?
Yes.
And is that a town road?
Yes. That was, really what we're showing here is essentially what was, the only thing we changed from what was approved 10 years ago was a little bit of the grading in here. We tried to reduce the grading around abutting property. But to be honest with you, I didn't design that. It was all done as part of the previously approved stuff. It had gone through peer review and back and forth, so we left that one alone as that was already approved. We didn't want to start trying to redesign this. The one thing that Alan had mentioned is that the traffic's going to be a lot less. Based on the ITE generation, we're at 100 vehicle trips a day, and it was much higher before when it was office space.
My reason for asking, I wasn't on the board at that time, so I wasn't familiar with...
Right, and I wasn't involved with it at that time either, so I kind of took it from where it was, that it was approved, peer reviewed, and kind of left it the same, to be honest with you.
I do recall that from the initial submittal back then, both Jerry Foskett, the highway superintendent, and Mike at Graves requested revisions to the stormwater management, adding more, which was added at the time. We did send this current version over to Jerry Foskett, and he's reviewing it, so we'll have a comment for future session, whether he's fine with it or he has questions or concerns.
And you have a lot of comments, which I'm sure Alan will get into, that we need to address. We have our work cut out ahead of us to respond to those comments, but I feel that there are items that we can't address within the context of keeping relatively the same design.
Do you have any questions? But, um, do you want to go over anything before I add?
Ah, just the Graves, if I can briefly summarize the Graves report, then. Again, just for the record, you received in your packet the initial Graves review report. There's 62 comments, which is average number for a project of this size. I'm not going to go through them item by item, I just want to summarize. The bulk of them are stormwater management because of the hilliness of the site and connecting in, and here and there, Michael, is either asking for more information or pointing out a discrepancy between the hydroCAD calculation in the report and the profile design, and saying you've got to adjust one or the other. So as with any project, you'll go back and forth with our engineer, and then we'll get a final report down the line on stormwater management. Most of it is stormwater management. A few other little things I'd like to just quickly point out. One of them is, again, the arborvitae buffer for an abutter is not part of the landscaping for the parking lot, so we need to add eight or nine trees around the parking lot design that's cut dry. A few other little things like that. He's talking about clarifying snow storage locations, recommending, because you did a site plan review for Doug Monson for self-storage a few months ago, and Doug said he wasn't putting in any dumpsters because people are just going to load up and it's going to become a daily problem. You have dumpsters up front in the non-commercial self-storage, but Graves recommended, similar to the Monson one, you do not include a dumpster within the enclosed commercial self-storage. It's going to become a daily health issue. Just as you run the self-storage, tell people that they have to take things on their own off the property.
Sure.
Otherwise, they'll turn it into a mini landfill transfer station.
I can respond to that. Ralph's intention was to have that, it's going to be, there's going to be enclosure around it, it's going to be locked, and so people won't be able to access it unless they specifically request dumpster and they pay a fee.
If you put it in a locked area away for his use versus leaving it open for people to just clean out their storage and it becomes a public health issue, you know, that's a different story.
Okay, so the intention, I believe, was that...
Well, that's two dumpsters, one by the garage, the other warehouse up top, and then one by the office, so then that one he can maintain.
Yeah.
Yep. Well, that'd be just a gate across because there's no real access to the mini storage. So it'd just be a gate closing, and it won't be fenced all.
And that's just a summary of the Graves report at this point, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. I do have, but I can bring it up later, I have a correspondence from an abutter, but I can bring it up later in the hearing.
At this time, we'll open it up to the public. If you would state your name and address and, you know...
Thank you. I'm Karen Fiero, and my property is 3A South Sturbridge Road, and I'm, my main concern is this, I forgot, the stack.
The detention basin?
Exactly. Because I am downhill, my well is on that side of my property. I'm worried about the well, I'm worried about my land getting flooded, my cellar getting flooded. I mean, I'm downhill from this property. That's a major concern to me.
So one of the things that we do as part of our stormwater management system is water quality and its required state level, that we provide enhanced water quality. So we have equipped the site with water quality structures to provide TSS removal, which basically lets your solids settle out and as well as catch oil and floatables. And so by the time you get to the detention basin, the water should be fairly clean, it can settle, and then it overflows. It's designed to meet pre-development conditions. It's going to be peer reviewed as far as...
But you just said the magic word, "should be fairly clean." But you just said the magic word, "should be fairly clean." You know, I, you hear enough about well contamination here in Charlton.
Yeah, and one of the comments.
And I don't want to have to deal with that.
I understand that. And one of the comments was that the bulk building where there is oil storage on site would be considered a higher potential pollutant and there's special treatments for that as well. Oil-water separators are required for those areas. So that's one of the things, even though the building itself is contained, and Ralph could speak more to the building containment, that basically it's sealed all the way around. So if there was something to happen with the oil containment in here, it's all contained within the building. So the foundation essentially acts as a tub. So if something were to happen with the oil storage in here, it's contained within the building. And that's, the building's going to be designed like that for that specific use right there.
Okay, when you say the building, are you talking like a cement wall?
Yes.
Inside the earth itself, like a cellar with a cement floor?
And then the oil tanks sit inside of that and it's equipped one and a half times the allotted storage. So just for round numbers, if it was a hundred thousand gallon storage, the dike would have to hold a hundred fifty thousand gallons. So then that way, if anything ever did rupture, it couldn't overflow.
But if something did happen, I mean, they could become a crack. I mean, how thick are these walls going to be?
Oh, it's all engineered by web engineering and then it's all sent to the state fire marshal for approval. And then it's all engineered as it's being built. So all the walls are watertight.
Okay, that's what you're talking about, the oil. But let's go back to this other little pond thing. And that's where, I believe, the plan also said that's where you're going to be dumping your snow also.
Right.
So now you have more water.
Sure.
But that's no different than the snow that forty plows off of their road or anybody else, you know?
I appreciate your concerns, I do. But I do feel we've designed a system that is compliant and that does meet the standards that are required to meet.
Alan has an idea that he'd like to share.
Yeah, just about every hearing we do, someone in some manner expresses the same concern about runoff and concern about how it affects their property or their well or something else. And the best way to explain it is, under federal EPA, state DEP, and local stormwater regulations, they're not allowed to increase the runoff, nor are they allowed to create a contaminant property off of their property. And that's why our engineer is involved. Everything he is designing, it has to reach the point by the time votes that in writing, our engineer is saying it will work. And then during the construction, our engineer goes out at different phases and monitors and inspects all the way. And then prior to getting an occupancy permit, our engineer has a field meeting with their engineer and our building commissioner to confirm that it's operating properly. So that's the system to assure that what your concern is will not happen. And I feel very confident we've got an excellent engineer in Graves Engineering. They do this all the time in Charlton and for other communities. That's why we're going back and forth. The comments that he's saying right now is, "I want more information, I suggest a few changes, and I'll look at another revision of this." And we go back and forth till we get to that point. So that's what the stormwater management is all about. And again, to summarize, they're not allowed, under state, federal, or local laws, to increase the runoff off of their site to an abutting property. And they have to ensure the non-contamination, and that's what our engineers are doing.
One thing, if you were at the meeting earlier tonight, we saw some reports from Graves Engineering and Graves, when he does these inspections for the town of us, he also does a lot of photography work to show as the steps are being progressed. So, you know, it's just not a site visit. He actually does a site visit and photographs the work that's being done for record.
Mr. Chairman, regarding the bulk fuel concerns, I did speak with both Jim Philbrick, the Health Agent, and with Kurt Meskis, the Building Commissioner, who's also a deputy fire chief. And they both said that the fire department, not just the state fire marshal, but the local fire department is heavily involved in reviewing the design as part of the building permit and construction issuance. Is it a separate permit or are they just involved in working with him?
But it's a separate permit that we have to get from the state fire marshal. Because we were permitted at 125 South Bridge Road. That permit is non-transferable up there. So we have to, once this gets all approved, web engineering will come in, design the bulk plan in that footprint that we've given to the planning board, so they would know exactly where it's going to go. And then they will present that to the state fire marshal and to Brian Chikarelli of the Charlton.
And to the Charlton Fire Department, who'll be involved in the process.
Yeah, to inspect and give them all their blessings, you know what I mean?
So that'll be part of the building permit application, review, design, and issuance process. Thank you.
And even the selectman will have to give me a permit as well.
Any other questions for the public? Will you state your name and address?
Candace Thompson, 8 Griffin Road. And I'm impacted by two sides because I'm right off Griffin Road. That secondary road, you made a comment that it was going to be used for trucks coming up there? It was my understanding that secondary road was supposed to be for emergency access only and not to be used on a daily basis.
Which road's that?
The one off Griffin Road right there.
Oh, that one?
Yeah, the one you're using now.
I believe we're going to be using both, okay.
What kind of vehicles are going to go up that? Because my bedroom's right there.
Right.
And that's real close, and we're only talking sixty feet.
And we've always been good neighbors, so I'm going to try to, you know, least impact you as much as possible. And you can ask anybody at 100 Sturbridge Road or at 125 South Sturbridge Road about me trying to be good neighbors and do different stuff. I do my due diligence to try and do that. And I'll come see you, just like I know a lot of people pack down below to drop off for their buses. We want a little turnaround down there or a little parking spot so people can still drop off and pick up their kids and do all that. And you'll have access to come in and go down that if you need to because that turnaround, where everybody cuts through to get on South Sturbridge Road, will no longer be there. So they'll be using that as a little thing. So we want to be good neighbors, be a good community, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I just want to make sure because you're going to have a lot of truck equipment. There's going to have to be fencing or something, you know, down the noise.
You come see me down there and talk to me about any concerns and I'm there, you know what I mean?
Yep.
Mrs. Thompson is correct that the previous plan from several years ago, and that version, that was only an emergency gated access. She is after it.
Yes?
Yvonne Roberts, 36A Griffin Road. I'm just wondering, is there going to be, are there any plans to put a traffic light at the end of Griffin Road and 20? Sometimes it's almost impossible to get out of there.
Right now, there isn't plans for traffic lights. We've reached out to District 3 DOT to see what they would want. And so they did want, they did want something more from us than we have a traffic count. They did want a little bit more of a study. They didn't say that we need to do a full-blown signal study or anything like that. As the previous project, I believe that was where the trip generation was expected to be a lot more. They did want that to be viewed. At this point, no, we're not proposing any lights. Provide more information to MASC DOT, but at this point, they haven't scoped us to do any signalization improvements.
Right now, I'm sure a lot of people do, but I use the cutoff between Griffin Road to South Sturbridge Road to get over to 31 or to get out to 20.
Yeah, because there are all days you can, you know?
Yeah, you can't get out.
And that's why I want the public to be able to cut across through there. Come right in that little short stretch, come right down, turn on. I don't want it to be used for emergency vehicles only and prohibit anybody at Griffin Road from using it, you know what I mean? Because I don't even want my oil trucks trying to pull left. I would rather go down, go, you know, our power station, come out that way where it's a little bit safer. And I know everybody cuts through that way, so I'm trying to work with it, you know what I mean? And we tried to get a light down there. I had Reed Hillmen come down. I brought down everybody else, they denied me for the light. So it wasn't even like we couldn't get a light. That was during the first phases when we were looking to go with BEP because we could bring more people in if we had a light there. And they said, "No, it's too close to the other light, they didn't want to move that," you know what I mean? So it was, you know, fighting it uphill and down. So instead, we came up with this design so people could still pack down below, drop off their kids. They could come through, cut through, you know what I mean? Because I've always left that open, you know what I mean? To try and maintain that little area I have.
Thank you.
Yep.
Oh, I have one more question.
One more question?
Yes.
Lights, what type of lights are going to be up there?
I don't, I don't know, I'm just assuming that the, just lights that shine down. Some of the building lights will have lights that will shine out, you know, with some security cameras and everything else.
Yep, so it's the typical parking lot light, shoebox, square shoebox.
It won't be applied to the property, it'll be used as a maintenance, right?
Yep, and. So we did, we did provide a lighting plan that shows the lights and, you know, they're cutoff fixtures, so they throw the light forward and down.
You know, I can clarify, what you're referring to is called the photometric plan. And our engineer reviews the photometric plan to make sure that the light layer is not creating a problem for the neighbors. So we're still reviewing that. But it's important to note that it is part of the application on that sheet. It's a review item.
Yes, the lady in the back?
Hi, I'm Sheri Roberts and I currently live up at 36 Griffin Road as well. I just have a couple of questions. The snow removal, where was that intended to be? You said snow removal.
I think we, it doesn't need a bunch of snow storage spaces, just where we thought trucks would naturally plow it to.
Oh, oh, okay.
And so that's what they were talking about, it's just where does the plow, where does the snow get plowed to? And so we'll take a look at that. There was some comments on that from the peer review, so we'll revisit that and make sure we have areas that, you know, they agree with and kill or appropriate.
And also, generally, the concept of the beginning, there is, that's going to be for stormwater?
Right here, yep. It's basically a hole in the ground for stormwater.
Okay, so what?
Well, because when you take a site and clear it and add pavement and building, you increase the runoff. And we're not allowed to increase the runoff, so what happens is the water comes down, it holds it, and it lets it out slowly.
And also, so obviously, we're from 8 Griffin Road. We're talking about the grading that seems to be is going to be the beginning of it?
Yep, up until about, so I think it's about four hundred feet in. So it goes up a ways, yep. And one of the benefits is that we're bringing the sewer, or sorry, excuse me, water line up and basically where we stop our roadway improvements, we're going to stop the water line. And we showed it stopping just past our site, but one of the comments was that we extended it all the way up to where we're doing roadway improvements, so that way it's not going to get water to everybody on Griffin Road, but it's going to be a start to getting people onto town water.
Sure. Now, um.
Might be mixed bag for people, but, you know, when we met with the Water Department, that's what they wanted us to do.
So they're, basically you're proposing to get everybody that has wells to the town waters?
We're not proposing that, but it's going to make it easier if the town would like to extend the main, that some of it more would be put in, in the properties that go past it. This one and this one, I think, would be able to connect. And at the least, stuff will be left. Excuse me?
Would we, that would be the sewer line or?
No, sewer line, we're coming down and we're tying in over here. So there's no sewer, just water line coming up.
Can I make a comment on the sewer line?
Could you speak, yeah, name?
Steve Burlingay represented my father from 12 Griffin Road. Speaking about her property, you have such an aggressive cut all the way around her property. How is that going to affect her septic system?
I mean, I think we're going to be far enough away that it shouldn't affect the breakout. That's a good comment, and I can take a look at it again to make sure that that doesn't become an issue.
I think it will.
Okay, it's a good comment, I'll take a look.
On the top of the hill, you got a thirty-two foot cut.
Yes.
So your house is going to be on a cliff.
Take a look and move right there.
So.
Not early.
If we could take a look at the sewer line?
Excuse me?
If we could take a look at the sewer line, that would certainly help.
How do you mean to?
For it to connect to the sewer line.
Oh, for it.
It's only a matter of time for, her septic system is right next to that, next to that cut.
Okay, yeah, we could definitely take a look at that.
I have another question. How far away are you from my property with that little pond thing?
Right here?
Yeah.
From, right here?
To the property line?
To the property, I mean, it's probably ten feet.
Ten feet? Now how far away is that going to be from my well?
I'm not exactly sure where your well is.
Neither am I.
All right, this one is not, this one isn't designed to infiltrate. The infiltration's happening up on these. So this one's just holding the water and letting it out. So it will be let out, it's not designed to infiltrate, so that should minimize any effect it would have on your well, if any. And again, the water's being treated and essentially cleaning rainwater that's going in there.
I don't know, maybe I'm kind of dumb here, but I was always told water runs downhill.
Oh, sure.
But they designed the materials in that basin, so it's not a saturation out. It goes in through an inlet and out through an outlet. And they can design it with material that is literally a holding pool and it doesn't seep out. That's how they designed this. It's not detaining it, it's just a pass-through basin for stormwater runoff.
So it's going to be like these you see like on Route 20 down the road? That's all sense, yeah.
Yep. Yep. They fill up a little bit and then they, you know, they just evaporate, you know, ninety percent of the water.
Where does the water go? That's what I'm trying to figure out.
It either evaporates or it goes through an outlet out.
Yeah, that's the, yep.
Well, how large is the bulk tanks, what capacity are they for?
We don't have a definite number yet, okay, but we're looking at approximately a hundred thousand gallons of number two. And then you're probably looking at, I would say, forty thousand gallons of clear and diet.
And that's all going to be maintained in the one building, the ninety-six hundred square foot building?
No, that's going to be in this building. This is this, yeah, yeah. In the ninety-six hundred is the bulk plan. That was the footprint that, when I went up to New Hampshire, that they had containing that size bulk plan. So we haven't even started the design on it yet because, you know, to pay another engineer to design it until we meet planning board approval for everything that we're doing here, then we'll bring web in and they'll design it and give you guys a copy and do everything that they're supposed to do.
So the twenty thousand square foot warehouse building, what would that?
Garage space. We're going to pack our oil trucks in there. Everything you see on 169 all lined up, all nice and neat. I want to be able to just polish them and put them inside. Yep.
And then you're not going to use the 169?
No, we'll lease that out or sell it or, you know, at that point, you know what I mean? We'll see which way's, you know, economy. Like, the original plan was done ten years ago, with the economy not being strong, we just never decided to build it up, you know?
Any other questions at this time? Alan has got more comments?
A few items for the board and for Frank's attention. One, Frank, you already received it, on August 23rd, we received a two-page comment from Kurt Meskis. It's a combined review comment from both Building Department and Fire Department, pointing out to the applicant what buildings under state and local laws would require fire sprinklers due to their size and which buildings won't. And also requesting that they relocate on-site slightly different where the fire hydrants were originally proposed, that type of thing. So it's more of a technical engineering. When we get the revision, fire and building will look at that again. Secondly, I just want to go back briefly to Frank's comment about District 3 DOT. The planning board provides a copy of the full application to the Department of Transportation Worcester office on anything up and down the Route 20 corridor. And that was reviewed by them, and that was the comment that Frank referred to of, they're looking for some traffic information. You need to coordinate that with our process schedule-wise. That's something that as you provide them, you'll provide us. We'll give it to Graves Engineering also. And prior to the board getting to the point where they close the hearing and deliberate on possible conditions, we need to keep in touch with DOT and see if there's any questions or concerns from them on that. So just keep that in mind, it's not something you get to after you're done with us, it's part of this process. Thank you. And third, Steve's daughter, Steve Burlingay's daughter, Kimberly emailed me this afternoon, and I'd like to give you her letter, briefly summarize it, and provide a copy to Frank, too. It's dated September 7th. I know Kimberly very well, she's an Assistant Conservation Agent for the City of Framingham. And so she, on behalf of herself and her family, brought up three items. I can give you a copy and I'll briefly summarize. The second of the three, I'm not going in particular order. She's asking about, is there a written emergency response plan associated with the bulk oil storage facility? And she has some details about that. Again, I'm not passing the buck, but that is something that is handled and required. The answer is yes, but that's by the Fire Department and the Building Department. So I'll answer her back and inform her of that, that it's part of the process, but it's not part of the planning board process. The third one. The third one, she's suggesting an operation and maintenance covenants to ensure stormwater system best management practices. That's mandatory as part of our site plan review. So, Graves requests an O and M plan. We don't call it a covenant, it's an O and M plan. And you'll provide that with us as part of the process, and we do incorporate the O and M plan into our approval. And the first one, she's just giving elevation and grade information regarding the well on the Burlingame property at twelve Griffin Road, and just saying, how is the groundwater table going to retide at the same elevation and keep the well in question? My suggestion on the first one is, if you can review it for our second hearing and give an answer for that, and I'll also share it with Graves. So, we can continue that item into discussion at the next hearing session.
Sure.
And those are just additional comments, Mr. Chairman, as we continue to review the application.
When would we be continuing the public hearing?
Uh, good... Through the chair, a question to Frank. Obviously, we continue the hearing to a date that you give us sufficient time for you to revise the plan, submit it to us, and give Graves some time to review it. So, it certainly won't work for our next meeting two weeks from now. We have two meetings in October, the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday. Graves will need about a seven-to-ten day period before their hearing to do a proper review for the hearing. So, which of the October meetings?
I think we can make the first one. I think we're probably about two weeks to make our revisions, you know, starting tonight. That gives him easily a week to review it, so I think we should do the first one.
So, the first, is that October seventh, I believe? Or, flip if you don't flip to October, I'm sorry.
Uh, fifth. October fifth is the first.
October fifth, okay. Then, if we can follow that schedule, we can have the second session October fifth.
If we're so, it seems like we're not going to hit that. I'll definitely let you know.
Definitely not.
I think October fifth will work then. Okay. Tonight, a lot of nice questions were asked, a lot of concerns. We will be asking Ralph Nichols and his associates to address a lot of those concerns. So, what we'd like to do is continue this public hearing, October fifth, and welcome back for that night. Hopefully, some of the questions you've asked us tonight, we'll address them. If not at that one, maybe at the next public hearing. Do you have a motion to vote to continue the public hearing through October fifth?
Second?
All in favor?
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you all. I can forward you her email, too.
Okay, yeah.
Yes, it'll help. And then you can chat with Mike and just address the agenda.
Yeah, Ralph was supposed to go to Congress, I think, so...
They canceled it, I don't know.
They canceled it.
Well, we did one of the seven thirty, we've got two others, Nancy and Cindy, and Nancy, I think, do you want to come up? Can you grab one more? Grab one more chair.
Thank you.
one, and briefly, before we talk with Nancy and Cindy, one of the other two is just to touch base on Kyle Stotts for one minute, and there's nothing to report. Again, you met with Attorney Bribowski, and he's still drafting up, and when I get it, you've already authorized to submit it, again, to avoid the two-hundred signature petition situation. And he's also working with Vanessa Associates to get us the traffic report, and I'm just reminding him that since his client, Kyle Stotts EndoVision, would like a review prior to town meeting, which I think makes sense in case questions come up from the neighborhood, then assuming he gets it, the better. So, I can introduce, we all know Cindy.
I'll introduce Nancy Jackson, and I'll briefly give an overview, and then we can get into
a discussion. I've known Nancy, I'm feeling very old, not you, me. I've known Nancy since I was starting out in the eighties. She worked for the State Office of Business Development in several central mass communities I've worked with. I've worked with her on various projects from that agency. Ask them to move down the hall or close the door.
I will.
Thank you. Carol, this is her. And she's been on her own the past several years, real estate consulting. She's worked with Dan Prowdy on a few things we talked about. We talked about the Route Twenty corridor, and we had a discussion that I suggested that we continue at the Planning Board meeting. I briefed the board and given them copies of the maps.
Oh, you have?
Yeah, of the general idea of it. And, I mean, just to mention right up front...
Anybody who'd like a copy and half mark?
Well, I certainly think...
I see that's...
Yeah. Well, I certainly think it makes sense to have a conversation like this. I do have a completely different opinion on the specifics and the process of how to move forward. I really don't feel there's anything for the October town meeting. There's a lot more factors here and long-range concerns that if there's any particulars of moving forward on a rezoning in this area, I think we have to take the sensitivity of the Casella situation going on and the type of zoning. I did explain to Nancy that ten or twelve years ago, we did have a joint proposal with Southbridge on the idea of an economic development access road coming from twenty down through. Ron Chininsky brought it forward. Peter was very instrumental in working as a leader on that at the time, and Southbridge pulled the plug on all of that. I know you met with Rose Scrivens, and I followed up and had the same conversation with Rose about...
Right.
They're not interests, but that's an overview of our conversation so far and the facts, but I'd like to give Nancy a chance now to add to it, throw anything out there, and then we'll have a continued conversation on it.
Okay, great. So, as Alan said, I've been doing economic development for over thirty years. Industrial development, actually, is my thing, and both for the state, for nonprofit corporations, and for private parties. I became aware of this whole area and project. First of all, I live in Spencer, and when I was working for the state, I started for the first ten years, I worked for the state. Central Mass was my area, so I knew Charlton well at that time. And I became aware of this one. When the Mass Alliance for Economic Development, you know, they put out every... periodically leads for people to jump on to get economic development into their communities. Well, a lead came out, and it was very strange. It was called Project Blue Steel. It was one of those that they give a code name to, and Project Blue Steel had a list of what they needed to locate in, find a site in Massachusetts. So, they were looking from everywhere, from really the Springfield Route Ninety-one corridor all the way over to, really, the Plymouth area, centering around, well, New Bedford and Fall River they had, just looking at. At that time, to Project Blue Steel, I proposed a site in Charlton. One thing led to another. Time went by, a lot of time has gone by, and the site that they're looking at and concentrating on is one you may have heard of. It's the site right on Route Twenty. It's, so, approximately two hundred acres, actually, and it's the site on Route Twenty, currently now zoned industrial general, and it's owned, it's called the Green Hill Realty Trust property. And as you know, you may or may not know that they came before the Board of Selectment in, I think, mid-July, and described the project that they are proposing for this site. They haven't made their final decision, but the proposal is for a liquefied natural gas facility on that site. And so, with that proposal and with their work that they're doing to do their due diligence and all, what happens in the world of industrial development is other parties see that someone is seriously considering a site. So, what happens is somebody now is seriously considering the site behind, the Blue Site as we have it on our maps. So, we've got another major project now considering the Blue Site. The Blue Site is zoned agricultural at this time. So, we've got industrial general for the two hundred acres here, and we've got agricultural, agricultural, agricultural. I will tell you that this yellow parcel is now affiliated with the front parcel, and it's in a trustee that's affiliated with the front parcel site.
Is it Alan's broker right now?
No, no. The proponent of this site bought this site.
Oh, so it's a different owner?
It's a different owner.
It's the project proponent?
It's the project proponent.
Okay, thank you.
Owns this parcel now. So, why is there all this interest in this area? Well, you've got something that I call economic waterfront property. I used to use that term when I referred to railroad property, and still, railroad, I still do a major amount of work with rail and railroad projects. So, just as you know how valuable waterfront property is, this property is all extremely valuable because the, through the yellow parcel, runs the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. And so, that means as long as this company has showed attention to do this, they're also planning to come back, I believe, to do another presentation in mid-September before the board to talk about this project a little bit further. And the Tennessee Gas Pipeline runs through here. So, we've got a lot of interest in this area. It's zoned agricultural right now. This is industrial. We've got some conservation and some Commonwealth of Mass parcels over here in Stirbridge. We've got some industrial parcels here over in Southbridge. So, what we're looking to do is actually make a commercial area over here. This would add about a hundred and fifty acres of land to an industrial zone over here, taking advantage of the so-called, my term, economic waterfront property being the Tennessee Gas Pipeline. So, that's what brings me here tonight. On August sixteenth, I came and talked to Alan about it, and of course, I have a fire lit under me because we've got a major project with a lot of money here. The project in the front is well in excess of a hundred million dollars. The project here would be the same size investment, possibly more, and of course, they want to make a decision. They're also looking at sites in New Hampshire. I'm trying to steer them to Massachusetts if we possibly can and keep them here. We have a site in Air requiring a zoning change that we are looking to do. That is going before their October town meeting, and we've got these parcels over here. So, because the fire is lit under me, we've got an opportunity here that is developing and progressing. We have an opportunity right behind it. There's no access to this site right now. As you see on your little map, there's just a suggestion of a road coming up into this area. Alan tells me that there are lots of things to talk about when it comes to the road, and I do understand that. I'm not here tonight to talk about a road, where a road might go, what engineering there might be, what another access might be. We're only talking about the basics of zoning tonight. So, yet, as of yet, we don't have the letter. I'm working with the Adam and Sons, the owners of the blue parcel. The Cooper family is the owners of the green parcel, and as I said before, the yellow parcel is now under the control of the project proponent of the two-hundred acre parcel in the front. So, I'm here looking for, how do we proceed on this? What exactly should we be doing to help? Alan says it can't go this October. It's disappointing that it wouldn't make it to a town meeting this October, if that's what you've decided. And, but we need to know, what do we do next? How do we work with you next to get this to a vote of the town?
I asked you a question when we met, a two-part question of, what is the company and/or what is the industry they're in, and you declined to answer at the time. Can you answer tonight?
I cannot. I still have a confidentiality agreement, and I cannot answer at the time. I did say at the, when I'm talking about my economic waterfront property, that you've got a Tennessee gas line here. It would be related to tapping the Tennessee gas line.
Was tapping?
Yes.
Tap it, to use it?
Tapping, yeah.
Oh, use it?
Yes, because, of course, it's a massive, high-pressure line.
That is one major issue here. The policy of this board in the sixteen years I've been here, and I was told prior to, is when anyone for anything comes in with a significant zone change, they have to come in, identify themselves, meet with the board as part of just kicking off brainstorming and studying, and at this point, it's all, we don't know a thing. And sitting here talking about this is fine tonight to have this level of a conversation, but I've never seen this board, and I've never seen any board anywhere I've worked, take anything beyond the level of a conversation of what we're having this evening without a proponent coming forward, introducing themselves. And this zone has, board has never gone to a town meeting without a proponent side-by-side with them at the town meeting stage, so that has to be kept in mind.
So, you're saying that you can't rezone a parcel, parcels of property, without a proponent? I don't have at this time a proponent for any development on the Cooper family parcel, but we still would like, because of reciprocal agreements that occur over on this area among these landowners, you know, we still would like rezoning of these parcels to take advantage of our industrial attention that we're getting here.
I think the folks who give you the attention have to come forward and meet with this board and be public about what their concern is. That's what triggers this type of a change in this community and anyone of, right now you're landlocked and you're residential, and we've had indications from people in the past in that part of town, if I can finish, please, concerns. You've also got, and I can hand out the article with the map from the Telegram, this is the Casella area. You have a very major, active organization of citizen concern that you're proposing in a hypothetical manner, changing the zoning for hypothetical, large, potential, non-residential when people are very, very up in arms and emotional about what's happening over there. So, again, we can have this type of conversation this evening, but from a typical town planning point of view, to move an actual solid proposal forward, a proponent has to be above board and come to the table, and you're saying you've got one, but they won't come to the table. They've got to identify themselves, and if you don't have one, this board in the past has said, "Well, we're not going to do a radical type of change from something right now until there's someone interested in something." So, I conveyed that in our discussion, and I have to bring it up again this evening.
Okay, all right. Well, you know, I've been doing industrial development for an awfully long time, and the thing is that someone will not come forward necessarily to say, "We will do this if you change the zoning," you know, you know...
We get it all the time.
So, but the thing is that they're not going to stick around. They're not going to... People don't stick around that long, so this is why, you know, if we say, "Okay, well, let's discuss this and start with the steps forth to change the zoning," or start with a process to change the zoning. You know, maybe, maybe or maybe not, the people who have concerns, as you said, the Casella, because of Casella, because of other things, the people who have concerns will get their chance to speak at any sort of a public hearing. This, of course, requires...
They're speaking right now.
A public hearing. And also, when they vote, because they would vote at a town meeting of whether or not to change the zoning.
I think if you're at a town meeting and you're asking the citizens to change an agricultural zone to an industrial zone, the first thing the citizens of this community are going to ask is, "What's going in there? What's going in there?"
And they'll be skeptical, very...
It won't get changed, Alan, I know.
Cindy, yes?
Sorry, Cindy, yes, he's been asking that for a while.
So, does this mean the Cooper property could not be, would not be changed in the near future because we don't have any necessarily, you know, current industrial user at that time? I mean...
Well, you're not just selling out one, you're selling out two pieces of, two parcels that need to be changed.
Three.
Three.
Blue, green, and yellow.
Are the yellow there?
Yeah.
No, Cindy, Cindy, go ahead.
First, I want to let you know that I'm speaking as a resident, as someone who lives in this area. I probably live closest to where these changes would be, and I am in favor of having these zoning changes. I do not know what businesses are going in there, but I do know that the town needs more... But I do know that the town needs more parcels for industrial growth. And as time goes on, there are going to be fewer and fewer areas where there would be this much acreage available for the industrial changes. I have, the, the green parcel is owned by my son. He has entered into an agreement saying this is something that he is in favor of also.
I don't understand how we can rezone this many, how we could think about rezoning this many acres without seeing some type of access plan. Because you're not talking about just doing a twenty-acre improvement. You're talking about hundreds of acres here that have no access. I believe the, the Cooper property is accessed by a driveway. And this other parcel is, is a dead-end road. So how are you going to re, how would you expect the, the, the public to say, rezone that when there's no way to know, one, what's going in there, and two, how they're going to get there?
I think that that would come when an actual project came to you for proposal with some engineering and design work done on a road. Doesn't that all flush out, flush out at that, at that time?
It flushes out during the zoning revision consideration process for something this large scale. One idea had been, and it is now by the wayside, the concept from ten or twelve years ago of an economic development access road that would connect down to Southbridge. But you had a conversation which you accurately described to me. And then I had the same conversation with Rose Scribbins that a few weeks before we met, you met with the city manager and the economic development director, Rose Scribbins, in Southbridge. And they said, they're no longer interested in a full-access road between because since that fell by the wayside, they developed one on their own internally. And she said, we have hardly any acreage left down there. So we wouldn't be a partner to what we were trying back then. So that leaves a major engineering problem, to put it lightly, of how do you get in there to do anything? And that's what people question, whether it's board or citizens or neighborhood folks of, at the time of the zone change, how are you going to do it? And the answer cannot be, we'll figure it out when someone comes along and they submit it for planning board permits. This is what planning is all about. You consider this during the zoning deliberation process. You, you're, from chapter forty-eight and chapter forty-one legality is you are landlocked right now. And Mr. Bory is correct. Where is the answer? That's a major-
All of our current IG property is along Route twenty, which has plenty of access.
Right.
So to develop the first, the purple parcel, the access is from Sampson Road to Hill Road, which depending what you're doing there, I don't think has the capability to accommodate any of that.
As you see on the colored map-
I see, I see the red line.
That there's a red line because as I said, there are reciprocal agreements going up and down this red line. No one has said that this is where a road would be, except that there are land agreements, rights of way, you know, agreements to access it via Route twenty. Through one road, through two roads if necessary. These are major investments that we're talking about. The idea of building a road or building two roads, different points on, on, on Route twenty is, is not, is not really an issue. Roads can be built to access this. Roads have to be built to access this two-hundred acre parcel.
So do you, the owner of the purple parcel, do they have an agreement with the owner of the two-hundred acre parcel to build a road through it to get to their property?
So far, there are agreements in place. If they're written at this point in time, I don't think that they are written. They could be in a matter of days if, if that was, were necessary.
How many acres of that area are we talking about with the three parcels?
With the three parcels, we have about a hundred and fifty-two acres.
Plus the two-hundred.
Plus the, approximately two-hundred in the front. It's a lot of industrial land. It's a lot of tax potential income revenue for the community.
If only something was done. We're going to change it, how long before something would happen, if something would happen?
If, then if you don't change, if it sits like this, landlocked like it is, then nothing will happen and no money will come into the community. There's a potential here for millions of dollars, millions and millions of dollars of, of tax revenue to come in.
It's a great part of town to put it.
To the community.
And you don't believe that all the residents who live around here that are, they're, they're, you know, so distraught over all the stuff that's happening in that area are going to jump into this meeting and say, we don't trust anybody-
Well, let's speak to one of the residents from that area.
Who has financial, but who has a financial piece in this?
My son knows.
Right, so that's the thing. So you could make your million bucks and move right out to a place that has safe- I'm just, and I'm just saying, you know, our job is to represent kind of the residents in town, what I would think if I was living up there. I, I just don't think that you don't have a plan in front of their face saying, this is what we're going to do. And, and disruptive companies are going to do it. I think that it's really a waste of time to think about-
To plan ahead for something like taking advantage of the fact that you've got the Tennessee gas pipeline
We have the Tennessee gas pipeline all over town, all over town.
With, well, we have a proponent here who will come, as I said, again, to the selectmen, I think maybe mid-September, to describe this project, to talk more about this project. This project is the same, has the same, an affiliate trustee has this property to actually tap-
But we're not any different than any other town. You just mentioned it, that some, another town that they were looking at had to go to town meeting to get it changed. I don't know, I didn't get the impression that they've already changed it.
They have not. They're going, it's going to town meeting in October, October twenty-fourth.
I don't feel that we can move that quickly on this to get it into this town meeting. So you'd be looking at our annual town meeting, which would be in May.
Well, that's okay. So I understand that. And Alan really-
And we're not different than any other town, is what I'm trying to say.
Well, different than, different than Air. Because I came to Air with the same type of proposal with a hundred acre parcel and said, we've got industrial here, agricultural here. Can we change that one? And the economic development person brought it up. It was sent to the planning board-
And acreage-wise, what are we talking about?
About a hundred acres.
I'm sure the specifics were different of the situation.
They might have been. They might have been. And I'm very interested in Charlton. I'm, I'm very interested in Charlton. So that, so what I need to know now? The answer seems to be no, it can't happen. And Alan already told me it couldn't happen. So I, you're just confirming what he said. So what do we need?
I believe he said it can't happen.
It's not going to happen as quick as you would like it to happen. It's not, it's, I can't see it going to-
And the process would be different from what you'd like.
Right.
For instance, one thing I'd suggest, and we have done this with other people who sometimes get their zone changed through and sometimes don't. I've just handed you an article that gives a nice summary of the Casella concern from people in that part of town. I'd suggest you have an informational meeting at some point in the future with all of those people. The Board of Health could give you all the contact information of who those people are. I think that's vital. Second of all, I can't recommend, and this board and then the Economic Development Commission have been unified with this point of view too, that when we do a major new, large-scale zone change, we don't use the IG anymore. We'd have to come up with something that isn't nineteen-fifties heavy manufacturing. Under the IG, anything under the sun can come in. It's an old-fashioned, out-of-date bylaw. We allow it in a few locations, still on Route twenty and one sixty-nine, and we allow a few acres to be tweaked here and there. But as we discussed, what we were looking at ten or twelve years ago as part of this effort was coming up with a study with the Worcester Business Development Corporation that Southbridge initially was going to fund, and then they pulled the plug, of similar to the way we did a BEP zoning bylaw with Armstrong Associates back then, that we worked with at that time, the WBDC, and come up with a new type of zoning proposal for the two-town corridor that we were planning at the time, doing comprehensive, long-range planning. It's not just twiddling the map at a town meeting to move more IG. There's a lot of negativity with that. And again, I'm sure people would go to the microphone and say, granted, you're saying you're going to use this one specific use under the IG, but the IG allows thirty other uses, and I've got a problem with twelve of them. You're dead on arrival to get the two-thirds. It's not planning. So I think the chairman is correct. No one is saying you can't. They're saying the timing, the process, and the details are very different from what you've initially put on the table. That's what we're trying to say.
On the map proposal you gave us, you listed as an LNG facility site.
The LNG facility site, the proposed LNG facility site is on the front two-hundred acre parcel. And they've come to the town and described, it's, it's called the Northeast Energy Center proposal. It's an LNG facility. As I said, the investment is well over a hundred million dollars for that parcel.
Out of curiosity, you say it's an LNG facility site. Are they going to be loading trucks with natural gas and transporting them through town?
Yes. Well, not through town. This is the reason this site is so important, because the access is out to Route twenty and one-half mile to the turnpike interchange. Nobody's going to be driving through by the town hall with LNG trucks. It's just not where, where they go. They go to peaking power plants, they go to large-scale manufacturing users. I've spent a lot of time working with the various mills in the Fitchburg area and every, the paper mills. And every, every winter, there was a huge problem that the mills would have to shut down because the temperature was so cold, the gas didn't flow into the mills. So this would be a case where a truck would go to a mill or go to a section of that gas line and infuse it with more gas. In a, in a liquid form.
We have a really good reputation at doing things right the first time on this board. I can say that. I've been on this board for a long time. So I think we are very, very open to, you know, any, all sorts of great projects. Just we have to do it, kind of follow the steps and do everything the right way to get to where, where we want to be.
Okay, so what are the steps? I know that the, that the, you know, the, the forty-eight, whatever it is, says that it's, you know, a, a change can be made from time to time by the, at the request of property owners in a written form. Should we do that at this time? I can have a letter tomorrow with the three property owners signed-
I would not recommend at this point for the tall town meeting. What, what I'd recommend is what this board has done in the past. Bring the proponent to the table for a future meeting. I know you've said that they declined to identify themselves at this point in time. I think they have to. I've never seen anybody not do that beyond initial discussions. And we've only had initial discussions, but beyond that, you want to change in a landlocked, sensitive area that's large-scale, you're a secondary party representing them. Who are they? What is the industry? Bring them to the table for an initial discussion and brainstorming with the planning board.
All right, so you say that that's a requirement, that a project proponent must come before you to request a zoning change, instead of a landowner coming before you to request a zoning change?
That's how we've always handled it in the past. I, it's, it, we're not, we're not, we're not disclosing. You have a company in hand, and you will not tell us who they are or what type of industry they are. And they should be here with you or on their own, or with you, either way.
We're trying to attract them to come here. So the thing is-
What's the secret? Why aren't they telling us who they are? I don't understand. I've been doing this, Nancy, as you know, for thirty-six years. And I've never seen anybody try to go to a town meeting without identifying who the project proponent is. And you have a project proponent. Who are they?
We have a project proponent if we have a zoning change. Do you see that we have this chicken and egg here?
No, we don't. I don't see this chicken and egg at all.
For you, it might be. For us, it's pretty straightforward. For us to go in front of town meeting and recommend a zoning change, we routinely have more information to present. And that way there, we can answer the questions that come up on town meeting floor. We can't just say, we don't know. If the landowners want a zoning change without going through this board, they can petition the board of selectmen to do their own zoning change. Correct?
Well, the way the law goes is either the planning board can submit or for a special town meeting, which would be October, you'd need two-hundred signatures of registered voters. And I'll be frank with you, if nothing changes and that type of thing came in, I'd recommend to this board to recommend denial to the town meeting and to basically take an active position of opposition because we'll be honestly telling everybody, there's a proponent who will not identify themselves, who wants a major change. What is the problem here? Why aren't they honestly working with the community and, and coming in? I've never seen that happen before. It's fine to do it at this stage of talking about process and how and what issues are. But beyond a conversation like this evening, I can't see why they wouldn't come forward. It doesn't make any sense to me. I just don't say it. So just saying, well, thank you very much, we're just going to put a petition in, won't get you anywhere. Won't get you what you're trying to achieve. I can understand, you know, discretion with companies looking around and looking at different sites. But if they want to, you know, fish and conbe in any community, at that point, where they're serious enough to want the zone changed to move their interests forward, they come forward.
So it's, it is then not enough that we have three property owners, the Jakimchicks, Coopers, and the Northeast trustee to come forward and say, we would like to have our property zoning changed to take advantage of investment that can occur as dominoes occur because of the-
Yeah.
Project in the front.
Yeah, because you've got someone lined up and they won't tell us who they are. That's a concern in any community. You want to change a landlocked, environmentally sensitive area without them coming to the table and working with the board and going over it. That's hard to swallow for boards and communities.
Talking about almost four hundred acres.
Well, two hundred acres is all ready to own correctly.
Yeah.
Right.
No, there's not a problem at all with the current zoning for, on the front property for the company, Bluestone, Blue Steel, Liberty.
Have you heard from them?
Yes. As I've mentioned to the board at times, they've come forward very publicly. They've met with me, Robin Craver, Kurt Meskis, Todd Gerard. They've met with the selectmen. The structure, and I completely commend the selectmen and the town administrator for considering this, is to have them come back and talk as they keep moving forward. And there's consideration of, similar to in another community, when that type of use came forward in another part of the state, of the selectmen appointing a working committee to work with them, the way you had a millennium committee to work with millennium. So they've come forward, and that's all on the pipeline. That's not part of what Nancy is looking for, for zone change. And if they decide to move forward beyond the stage they've done right now, they'll continue to work with them, and they'll come in and meet with you directly, face to face. And so they've come forward. And there is no need for a zone change on that property up front. It can be done if they choose to do so.
But what you folks are looking for here is independent of that.
Yes. But it is, it is, that is the catalyst for this request. There's no question that that is the catalyst. This pipeline is a high-pressure, you know, multi-state. It crosses, you know, thousands of miles, pipeline. It sits there, and no one can use it until someone can tap it. These folks can tap it. They bought the land, it goes through, they can tap it here. That means that this could have major industrial investment in the property in between. And, and so the request is to position the town to be able to take advantage of this, this situation we've got going on here to create this much more, that many more acres of industrial zone, or whatever zone. I don't know what zone you would call it, or whatever. I think that, you know, we sort of just thought industrial general because that's what this one was. We've got a lot of industrial-zoned land over here in the Southbridge area. So Southbridge is, you know, I mean, look at the large parcels here in Southbridge. Some of them are owned by the town.
That are vacant.
Okay, so you say that a requirement, or you would like to see a proponent come forward, that you don't want to plan ahead to say, let's take advantage of the situation we have with possibly tapping the pipeline. When you can get natural gas into an area, that means that you can get some nice, big, you know, heavy tax-paying industry there and investment in here. But you're more concerned about who it would be?
Haven't we rezoned different parcels and- Haven't we rezoned different parcels along Route twenty from, whether it be agricultural to IG? And now all of a sudden they're IG, they want to be rezoned to something else because IG doesn't fit?
Yes.
Whether it be BEP or commercial?
Yes.
So how can we just, you're picking IG and what if that's not the right fit depending what comes forward? So you say you have a proponent-
Then I guess, then I guess the property owners at the time would come forward and say, we're requesting a change. We can only, we can only be at the-
Then the answer would be no. If this property was anywhere else in town, you had a hundred acre parcel in the middle that was zoned residential and they wanted with zero access to a highway and they wanted to be zoned IG, the answer is no. It's straight up no. How, you know how many hundred acre parcels we have in town? It's not going to happen. The residents around it aren't going to allow it. The people who travel those dinky roads that get to it don't want it. Without more information to show what the big plan is in the big picture and how it affects the town and how it benefits everybody, not just those landowners, it's not going to happen. This town has multiple hundred acre parcels out in the middle of nowhere. And if you're going to do it here, why wouldn't we do it down there?
Because here we have someone willing to put in the infrastructure, the access road or roads necessary to do it.
Says where? Says who? There's no, there's no plans of a road. There's no agreement. This landowner is not here saying, I'm going to have, have, allowing access down to this property. And this landowner can say no, and then what? Then this is zoned IG with zero access.
Obviously, the agreements are in place for this property and the proponent of this site.
I do want to clarify something, and I've mentioned it to this board and I mentioned it to Nancy, that, was it Green Hill Realty?
Uh, yes, Green Hill Realty Trust.
It's one of two possibilities for Liberty. They, they've also optioned the Gardner property and I spoke-
This is not Liberty. This is a joint venture of Liberty and North Star Industries.
Still optioned to sides. And again, Mr. Gardner for the Gardner Realty Trust confirmed to me last week that he understands that this site is optioned and his is optioned. So the project proponent still has two options. They may go there, they may go to the other site, they may go to another community.
Liberty Properties may have optioned the Gardner site. The joint venture has not optioned the Gardner site. This is the only site in Charlton that they're with.
I'm just repeating what I've been told.
Okay, so we, you would like to see a, an actual project proponent come forward.
And all for us to say that we support any zoning change at all?
We'd see a reputable company who has a plan and a financial background and a experience that could do something safe in our community would be perfect. That's ideal for that.
And other than the proponent, what else would you like to see?
I would say right now, the only step is the step of meeting the proponents and having a conversation with them, with the board about, A, what it's all about, B, how serious they are, and C, how do they look at a project proposal if, if a zone change comes through? Because that's the types of issues that are deliberated pre-town meeting and during town meeting. And there's no other way to do it anywhere that I've ever worked in my career and in Massachusetts. That's how it's done. And I think the board has expressed enough, and I've expressed enough tonight, the, the need for that and the reason and the rationale for. So it's one issue right now. If they're serious, they could come forward and meet with the board and have a conversation and see where it goes, one direction or another direction.
I think access is key.
And what would you like to see for access? Do you want to see the written agreements about the access to Route twenty? Or do you want to see the preliminary engineering done on this parcel for the-
Not just that that landowner's going to allow that access from Route twenty. That the proposal to use the parcel forty-six dash B dash two will be accessed mainly from Route twenty, not from Hill Road and Sampson Road. And it's not for me. It's so when you're, we're in front of town meeting trying to get them to approve this change and that question gets answered, you can give them an answer that everyone will be satisfied with.
Okay, so you want to see the access agreement. I think that's already penned. Okay, what else?
I, I think once they're here giving, you know, what, what their ideas are, I think then we would have more ideas for what's pending.
That would generate more questions.
That would generate more questions and answer.
But they're not, but no one is before you looking for a project review or a site plan.
But you have a proponent in hand. I think that's clear. We're now talking in circles. And I'm tired of talking in circles. You clearly have a project proponent. They should be here in the future talking to the board. That's step one.
Okay, all right. So when we have something like the Town of Air that is going to take the landowner's request to rezone their property so that they can then try to get the project on their property, or the town can try to get the project in Air, they're wooing the company to come here. And it's the opposite in Charlton, where you're saying they have to come and ask you, instead of you saying that we have-
If in another community, whether it's Air or Worcester or a town in the Berkshires, if someone informs the board and the community that there's a project proponent, but then they won't identify them or their proponent won't come in from, from day one, that's a problem.
It's not often that you have investments of five hundred million dollars or so in one fell swoop. And think about that for the town and the town budget and what that would do to the, to the revenue stream of, of this town.
I'd love to know who they are. I'd love to know.
For a piece of land that sits-
Anybody who is willing to invest five hundred million or whatever, they're coming, they're, they're, they're not scared to come out and say, this is what we want to do, this is what we want to do.
Of course they are. I have done major projects with the EMC Corporation, with Secoban, with Genzyme, by the way, one of their facilities I helped put into, in, in, in here, the goat farm. But of course, they, they remain quiet until they're, they're publicly traded. They can't just come out and say things.
None of it so far. And though I, I've bonded those size companies many times, so I get, I get the, I get the game. But at this point, if they're very serious and they, and if them stepping in here and making it public is the, with that kind of investment is really, they're that far away. They're going to be here at this table, they're going to have their best attorney at this table, their best, their best representative on this table saying, this is what we're going to do and this is what we're going to do for your community. And by the way, we're going to give you a ball field too because we like your town.
I don't, I don't think you can compare tonight's discussion with Air's discussion. Air, you're talking about a little hundred acre piece of property. Here, we're talking-
Hundred and fifty.
We're talking about four different pieces of property.
No, three.
All right, well, three. You're talking about three different pieces of property. I, I-
It's a hundred and fifty acres here. It's a hundred acres in, in Air.
But you, but you're also including the two hundred acres.
It's already zoned.
Yeah, property zone.
And because it was already zoned, that was why when Project Blue Steel came up, I was able to go to the Mass Alliance for Economic Development and say, I've got a site in Charlton that you might consider. And they did consider it. And we're two-plus years down the road into this. And on mid-September, they'll come and speak to the Board of Selectmen more. It's a liquefied natural gas facility. It's a joint partnership between Liberty Properties and, and Northeast, North Star Energy. It's called the Northeast Energy Center, and this is the site they're focusing on.
Okay, I'm, I'm going to take the wrap for this, okay? I think we've discussed this enough tonight.
Okay.
I think we've given you some ideas. You've given us some ideas. We have an agenda of other people that we have to address tonight.
Okay.
So I'm going to say that I'm asking that this-
Could I ask one question?
Sure.
If all this information is brought and it's brought up for the May town meeting, would the planning board consider being sponsors or would it need, need to be property owners, would need to petition?
I think we don't have an answer for that right now because we don't know what we're talking about for a project proposal. It, it could be either way. We don't know yet. It's just too early to tell. But the possibility is either way are on the table, absolutely.
Cindy, you sat at this table. You know if it's beneficial to the town that the planning board's going to be supportive of?
Right, I'm just, just clarifying the process.
And I even think if, if things were differently here, if there was a proponent involved and, and you gave us a chance to buy into it and get behind it, it could have happened at, at fall town meeting. But there's too many unknowns. And, and there's too many, because if this project upfront doesn't go, we just rezoned a hundred and fifty acres to more IG, that can, that, there's no guarantee what's going to happen there.
Something could come in that really, maybe nobody really wants in that area, but now it's zoned and we're stuck with it.
Okay, thank you very much for your time. Thank you very much for your input. And so we'll be in, in, in touch. I'll be in touch with Alan if that's the correct procedure. Okay, all right. Thanks a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Good night, thank you.
Thank you.
Skip this presentation. I'm not sure if he wants to bring up something regarding his property or not, but- Skip, you've been, Skip, you've been sitting here all night and-
You want to talk to us, Skip?
You want to talk to us about anything?
The only thing I, I was up here, it was the Nylund property, the sixty-one A.
Okay, it's coming up. We didn't do it yet.
Yeah, I know.
It's on the list. We're running on time.
Yeah.
If anyone would like some chocolate, please.
Is that going to help?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm not sure, but I'm willing to try. Can we have it go on camera?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Um, we can jump to those because he just kept calling.
True.
Um, that's the sixty-one A releases?
Yep.
Yeah, um, what we have, and I'll hand it out. See if I can get the right file to do it with me. Here we go. Um, we have five sixty-one A release requests that have come in. Four of them are related to one project, and I'll explain the fifth one. Sixty-one A, as you know, is the task classification. And you approved the site plan review for Brendan Gove and Zero Point up around North Brookfield Road for the solar network he did of those mini fields. So now he's had the property owner, Mrs. Nylund, for three of them, and Jeff and Laurie Richardson for the fourth one, put in through their attorneys their sixty-one A task classification release so he can go for his building permits for three of the solar fields across the four parcels. I'll just pass them around. They're very routine. And then I'll get to the fifth one in a moment, which is a completely different proponent, but it is Mrs. Nylund's property. They're all what you approved for the site plan review for the, the array. I did not pull the site plan out. You've already approved it. And some of the array property is not in sixty-one A, but other pieces are. At the bottom of the first page or on the second, it just mentions the map block and lot. You're not approving anything. Under state law, the selectmen do the release. But under state law, planning board, Board of Assessors and Conservation Commission each give a recommendation as to whether or not they have a problem with the selectmen not executing the right of first refusal purchase to take it out of sixty-one A. The fifth one, I'll explain right now and I'll hand it out.
So I'm real, real quick.
Absolutely.
These properties in sixty-one A, the town can choose to purchase them.
Yes, the town has the right of first purchase or they refu, have the right of refusing the first purchase, yes.
And that, that purchase is based on what price?
Um, it would be based on, if the town decided to consider that, the town would have to hire two real estate appraisers and come up with two reports of highest and best value and then negotiate a price based on that.
Would that be highest and best value before the permit approval or after?
I don't know. That's a good question.
Because that's, that changes a lot.
Yes, I don't know. That's a good question. It's just outside of my-
I'm guessing we're not going to exercise our right of first refusal, but it could be some type of misstep on their part for not taking mine sixty-one A before this process.
Well, the planning board's perspective usually is asking themselves the question, is there something we're doing, long-range planning or a project that we feel that there'd be a problem? For instance, several years ago, I remember, one of these requests came before you and the property was right next to the middle school. So the planning board's comment was, we'd recommend, prior to considering a release, the selectmen contact the school department and see if there's any interest from the school department of needing that property. And they did. They contacted them and they said, no, there isn't. And they did the release. So we kind of look at it from our world of planning. If there's anything of your concern, conservation will look at it from their world, assessors. And I know that the selectman's office has been rightly so, as they're looking to expand water and surge, they're having Kevin and his department look at these two to see if there's anything there related to those. So you have four related to that. The fifth one is another piece of land owned by Mrs. Nylund up in that neighborhood that's not part of it. And attorney Neil submitted it. And Jason DeBois, the engineer, told me that when it's released from sixty-one A, Katie Builders is his client, he's putting together a three lot A and R. So that one is related to releasing about eighteen acres, I believe. There'll be three large lots that Katie Builders will look to put homes and they'll bring in an A and R at some point down the line. I'm not familiar, I've heard of Katie Builders, but I haven't interacted with them. Are they active in town?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're rich and spencer. Brothers peasants.
They're a big, they're a, they're quite a big family.
Yeah, good guys.
Spencer area.
Sorry, so where?
What, what we're looking for tonight is a recommendation-
To the board of selectmen.
The board of selectmen to-
Not exercise our right.
Of first purchase.
Yes.
I kind of like the idea that it's pizzas.
So.
Second.
All in all, five.
Yep.
Sounds good.
So you all approve?
Yes. No problem. So now the, the selectmen will do the final deliberation, but who we've recommended.
Thank you.
Yep.
We do have one that came in yesterday for your next agenda for Ron Gothius' property on his. It's in sixty-one A and he'd like to take it out. So I'll just put that, I couldn't put it on legally because it came in yesterday and we posted the agenda.
He went for the zone change on?
Yes, and for the entire parcel. That's his right, you know, and he can do something if he wishes to under his honor. Back to the-
Extensions?
Yes. Tarek Murkowski has submitted his request to extend annually the approval on the Ted site plan because he's still got the two small buildings that he hasn't put up yet along the side. So you'd extend it to that date, September twenty-fourth, two thousand, thank you, two thousand seventeen? No problem?
It says here, hi Alan, I would like to formally request an extension on the Ted site plan located at twenty-seven Worcester Road in Charlton, Mass. I'd like to have it extended to nine twenty-four, two thousand seventeen. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
All right, thank you.
And Russ Jennings has submitted the annual extension for the Jennings Road sub, extension, definitive subdivision plan.
Okay, don't make concern. We would like to take this opportunity to ask that you place us on your next agenda so that, so that you may renew our Jennings Road, Jennings Road subdivision and the approval to nine fifteen, two thousand seventeen. Do you have a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Right.
Thank you very much.
Complete Streets? Um, as I put in your packet, on the Complete Streets, we had finalized a policy statement that was, that would go to the select board that, under the requirements of that sidewalk grant program, the selectmen or the city council in every city of town accept the policy statement, which then we include in the application to become a member of the grant program. Kind of like joining Costco or BJ's Club or Sam's Club. Since we finalized it and Jerry Foskett took another look at it, I had a meeting with Jerry and with Dan Deniska, who's the planning consultant from Central Mass on this. And Jerry raised a very valid point that I, that I bring back to the table. He requested that we revise it, per our suggestion, to focus only on the village district. I think it's a very valid point, if I can briefly elaborate. Originally, the proposal was village district only. When we did the village district study last year, we recommended adopting a complete streets program for the village. And the idea would be to do sidewalks in the village. As we started to work on it with- As we started to work on it with Dan, Dan suggested we try community-wide, cause some communities have gone community-wide while others have done a district. And he said, why not ask for the whole community? So we just shrugged and drafted it up that way. And Jerry said, well, I have two problems with that, and he's, I respect it and I have no problem supporting it. One, he said, based on some incidents he's had recently and scattered around town, if we do a townwide one, he will get inundated with requests out beyond the village district that will become political and emotional issues. And for example, on a particular road about a month ago, he was doing the road improvement, and Anna Butter came out and thanked him for putting the sidewalk in, and he said, what sidewalk? And she said, well, you're putting the sidewalk in, and he said, no, I'm not. And he explained, and he got very, very angry. So he said, if we do a townwide at this stage, we're gonna run into that, and we're gonna be competing with ourselves for village districts. Second of all, if we do village level under complete streets, the, you have to have a committee that works with the highway department, and because it's the planning study, under a planning study, it's the study committee, which is the planning board. So Jerry will work with you over time on doing this, and with your engineering consultant, and with me and Jane as your staff. If it's community-wide, it has to be an interdisciplinary committee appointed by a town, town select board or city council. It has to have nine or ten formal entities. And Jerry said, I can't work just to try to get some sidewalks going with this wide thing that becomes very complicated. So Dan said, and I'm not throwing him on a sword, Dan said, you know, I guess I created this by suggesting city-wide. Why don't we just go back to the village-wide and it works for everyone? So all this did was change townwide language back to village language, this version. So I talked to Mary Devlin about going with this version at an upcoming meeting, but you have to vote it first, and I can just explain to them that we tweaked it back to village because of the mechanics and the problems of initially throwing yourself in the water instead of taking baby steps. Um, on a side note, we had a great meeting in the field yesterday of your engineer, myself, and Jerry around the village district, of where to come up with, when we get approved as a member of the club, where we could then put a grant application in the village for a, a mix of new sidewalk and repairing existing. Because what we're hearing from the state is, you're eligible to repair and you're eligible for new. So if you kinda put in one that's a little of both, you're more competitive for the money. So that got off to a good start yesterday.
Can I add a question?
Sure.
I noticed in Sturbridge, on Route twenty, going through the center of town, they redid their sidewalks. Not the whole sidewalk. What they did was they made them more handicap accessible and painted them yellow.
Sure.
They would only do like a four-foot section, and then go, then when it came to someone else's driveway or the town road, they redid it. Would that have been part of that plan back then?
Probably, yeah, that makes sense.
Where they got the money to do it? Did you go through Sturbridge?
Mass Highway might have done it.
Mass Highway, yeah. It didn't come out of complete streets particularly, cause that's brand new, but it came out of a state funding source, absolutely.
Did you go around that New Cumberland Farms? All through there.
It could have been just part of a, a regular tipless project. It could have come out of the governor's highway safety
Yeah.
grants award which does that. It could have come out of something block grant related, the sources, it probably came from something.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, um, what I'm suggesting tonight is just replacing the previous version with this one, which brings it back down to village district, and makes the advisory committee to work with Jerry, the planning board, because you did the study. And when we were used as an example at the training session, they actually held up your study DOT down on Belmont Street and said, for instance, the town of Charlton has a village thing, and out of this one, the planning board and the highway would do it. So it just brings it back to what they're expecting anyway.
Great.
I'd like to make a motion to accept this draft of these streets policy statement.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.
Um, under growth management, a couple items, few things. One, on the housing authority project, um, the contracts with the state are all signed, and the consultant is just working on the analysis. So we'll bring that back in the future as they, as they have something to report. Um, second of all, under growth management, as you know, in Charlton, the Conservation Commission and Todd as their agent, uh, have the responsibility on the open space and rec plan, and they're working with a planner from Central Mass Regional Planning. She's been assigned excellent planner, Jane Armington. And I had a meeting with her the other day, cause she wanted some planning information and data, um, as she finishes the draft from a few years ago that was done by VHB, um, for the open space and rec plan. So she is trying to finalize it so in October, she'd have a final draft, and then the Conservation Commission will sponsor, and they, they have an advisory committee of citizens working with them too on it. They'll sponsor an evening meeting, and she asked if I'd attend, and I said, I certainly would be glad to, and I'd like to, when I get it, forward it to you, the notice too, if anyone's interested. So when they finalize the open space and rec plan, they'll then submit it, the Conservation Commission, to the state DCR. The state reviews it, and if they accept it as meeting their format, then the town is grant-eligible for open space and rec grants. So that's in the pipeline, and, um, I think that they're approaching it in a very good way. Just a few other quick things on the growth management, other than my usual end of the meeting checklist. Um, I'd like to give you in your next packet, um, the draft annual goals and objectives for you to then work on for a meeting or two. Um, and I wanna just put forward one idea right now, cause again, when we're talking about previous of comprehensive planning, you all know Rich Kair, he's a member of the EDC, and, uh, he's a big proponent on village district and such. And he owns some property on Trolley Crossing, and I had a very interesting brainstorming with him in the field last week. He's really given a lot of thought to Trolley Crossing as a neighborhood, as a northern section transition from village district to Route twenty. And regarding his own property and some of the other properties, he has some very interesting ideas. And what I said to him is, you know, he said, how would anyone move forward on considering this? How do we have a dialogue? And I said, I, I'd like to, at some point, I'd like to mention to the planning board this evening, and having him in some night to talk with you. And one idea I had is, not to do a plan or study of the level you've done, but he's right. You've got some really nice property owners up there who are nice people, we've met before, and they're all interested, not in just their own property, but the neighborhood. Um, there's some interesting opportunities brewing up there on his and some other parcels. And one thing we could do is chat with Rich and maybe the EDC, the rest of the EDC about, you get annually from Central Mass free consult time. You've used it before. We would, and I mentioned this even to Jane Armington the other day, the planner who's working on the open space and rec plan. I said, you could brainstorm and consider asking CMRPC, not to do a study or a plan, you don't need anything that heavy, but maybe staffing you for a workshop some evening in the, in the upcoming planning year. You sit down, you invite in those owners, you brainstorm some of Rich's ideas and your thoughts, and maybe you come up with a vision blueprint, or just even a, a summary of, of the workshop brainstorming. I think there's some mutual interest stuff up there. Maybe some of it needs a rezoning, some of it is just, um, working together. There's a, there's one property owner who's talked to me and talked to Rich that says, I would like to work with you, Rich, mutually on our properties. And so I just think it's, it's an interesting dialogue to brainstorm and throw those ideas out there as a, I don't even call it a long-range planning, it's kind of a mid-range type of thing, and I've seen that, and I've been participated in that in other places. So you know how you've done the village study. You don't need anything like that, but kind of a, a planning step. And I think Rich would like the opportunity to come in and talk with you, and maybe it's something to throw on your list of annual goals and objectives. Just wanted to throw it out there this evening.
Would you invite the residential of Butters?
It's up to you. Um, how far out you wanna go.
Just, just the director Butters, just because you know
Yeah.
a couple of them are more involved than others, and.
Yeah, it's not a bad idea.
Just to, just so you can kinda head that off at the pass, and they're more involved from the beginning.
Yeah, they might have.
They might have some great ideas. Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I was really impressed by how much thought Rich had put into this beyond just his own property. I've talked to a few bankers who have approached me as they have brainstorming with landowners about the financing, and both bankers said, you know, if you did have that conversation, they or their staff would come to the meeting too. So that could be pretty good. So, great, thank you on that. Um, under growth management, that's all I had. I just have my usual list of other things when you wish to get to it, Mr. Jones.
When we finish off with Alan, then we can do.
Okay. Um, I'll be as quickly as possible on an average-sized list. One, um, I have a recommendation from Graves Engineering for a field adjustment of the upper parking lot at Treehouse Brewery. And Jane was kind enough to copy for you Michael's recommendation for approval of their attached request. They hit unexpected ledge at the top parking lot, so they wanna adjust the elevation, and they wanted to tweak it a little bit by seven feet in one direction. Michael reviewed the whole plan and said, there's no problem with doing it at all, so if you'd voted as a field adjustment, that's, um, Michael's cover letter with their, with the McClure Engineering attached. Related to that, Damian Gujro asked me to bring up tonight to verbally invite the board and get back to him with a head count. He said he knows it's a little late, he apologizes, but he's organizing a groundbreaking ceremony this Monday at five-thirty, and he'd like to invite the planning board.
I've privately invited on today's paper. It says it's privately invited.
Oh, you've been privately invited then. I didn't know, I didn't see that, really?
Today's paper.
Then you are, you're on the list.
We're on the list. First time up.
Wow, so either this evening or tomorrow, if you'd like to let us know if you're available, cause he'd just like a head count. Not names, just how many people.
But if more than three of us go, is it considered a meeting?
No, it isn't.
We're going as individuals.
You're going as individuals for it, something a little more ceremonial.
That's right.
I wouldn't worry about it.
No.
You're not deliberating on any of them?
Uh, we have before us, uh, something from McClure Engineering regards to, um, relocating the parking lot. Do you need a motion for that?
Yes, um, to accept Graves' recommendation as a field revision.
Do you have a motion to accept this as Alan just stated?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, I'll quickly go through my list as quickly as possible. Um, the folks from SBA have scheduled, um, the flag repair for, um, next week on the fourteenth. I think that's Tuesday?
Dan and Crane are over the weekend.
Did they?
Over on.
Route twenty.
Route twenty.
Wow. Cause he told me, yesterday he called me and said he's, he'll get it done on the fourteenth, and he'll get down to Dresser Hill and do a, a switch out too.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, maybe they had to repair the land yet first, and then the flag is showing up on the fourteenth?
Maybe.
Yeah, yeah. The town is looking toward, Robin Craver talked to me about the green communities designation that was proposed several years ago, and the part with the stretch code that's mandatory didn't get approved at town meeting, and she told me and some other folks that the selectmen would like to put it on the warrant again. So she requested, would the planning board consider support of the green communities designation? And I said, if you can give me some information to give the board for you to consider at a meeting before town meeting, so she'll have whoever's assisting her from a state energy agency give us something, and I'll get it to you for a future meeting before town meeting.
More green energy for our homes.
Just looking through my stuff. I've got the latest Graves Engineering, just project status spreadsheet. I'll just hand out copies for you.
They haven't given a date yet?
Um, I also have a calendar that was emailed to us for the town meeting schedule. Oh, I didn't hear them. Um, they've scheduled it for Tuesday, October eighteenth, and this calendar gives you all the steps leading up to then of warrants, opening, warrant closing, deliberation. And I've already told the selectman's office that, um, you know, we've got the two from the water sewage, we've got the Carl Storts, and Russ Jennings is going to have his engineer work on finalizing the as-built for Jennings Drive Extension, hopefully. You authorized me to sign A and Rs in between when there's a closing or an estate issue, and I did sign one since your last meeting, and I'll just show it to you. I would not have signed one if it was creating the lots. It was related to a family estate closing. And all it did was, for finalizing the estate processing, they didn't have anything on record. It's a perimeter plan. They could have even filed it without getting it signed, is what they call an eighty-one X plan. So it was submitted by Rick Planner for the estate of Raymond Siani. And all it does is take the old historical deed and put it on a plan that visually shows it, gets it on file at the registry, and they could finalize the estate. Again, they didn't need a signature, but the lawyer felt more comfortable that it came in as an A and R as opposed to what they call an eighty-one X perimeter plan. Treehouse, Trolley Crossing, um, one or two other quick ones that I have. I just wanted to bring to your attention and, and get the board's final determination. Um, I've had an overdue bill on one of the site plans, and I spoke with the applicant today who said, I'll try to pay in the next few weeks, and I said, that doesn't work. We really need these paid, these are serious projects, and I'll pay in the next few weeks doesn't work. I'm willing to recommend to the planning board tonight that I would recommend the condition that if we get paid by next Wednesday, what's been overdue for a few weeks, um, I will recommend waiving the fifty dollar business day overdue as a good faith for getting paid, and she informed me that she would do that if the planning board agreed. So, um, if you concur, I'd like to continue with what I agree with the person today, that we get it by next Wednesday, otherwise back to September first, it continues. I, we've never had this problem, but it is one at the moment, so. Thank you.
Do you have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Just a little checking. And that is it. Again, just if you wanna let me and Jane know by tomorrow about the Treehouse invitation, we'll give them a head count.
On Monday?
On Monday at five-thirty, yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll go sometime, I'll.
Three?
Yeah.
I don't know yet.
Okay, let us know, no problem. Thank you.
I just wanted to see the woods. See the woods. I don't drink beer.
They won't have any throwaway. They'll just have shovels that they're churning. Thank you very much, Mr. Jones.
All right, we've got some minutes. Jane is giving it to us.
A lot of minutes.
If we could start with the mail letter. Take a minute to review it. Any questions on the mail letter? Have a motion to accept. Minutes.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we review the May eighteen?
Shall we make a motion to accept the master's agenda?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Can we look at the June first? Any comments for the June first minutes? Any comments for the June first minutes?
Motion accepted.
So... All in those in favor?
Aye.
And we have the June fifteenth.
Under the Blackwell Drive thing, Kate, what? I got a cross between me and Pat. Is that member Patricia Jane Binsley?
Paul Pierce, yeah?
First page.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
You asked me to remind you about Pete, is that what? Yes. Is that what I got there? Sure. I talked to Alicia and she's all on board, so.
Any questions on June fifteenth?
Nope.
The one that Jane made.
Made that one correct. All in those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And one other thing before we close for tonight. Alisha has not had much time to come forward, but she really still was interested in being an alternate for the board. And I was wondering if he would, if we could get, go before the selectmen and switch your seats with Alicia.
Very great.
Yeah.
Alicia suggested that. I think that makes a lot of sense. And if the board directs me tonight, I can talk to Mary Devlin. Just procedurally, she has to put the cable notice. If anyone came forward, I'd explain what the situation is. And then after that notice period, like you've all done before, she'd schedule a joint. You'd go to the selectmen's meeting for a few minutes, do it.
Go ahead.
Great. Alicia said she would like to still be considered as your EDC rep. She enjoys that and she's available for EDC if you'd like her to continue doing that, so. You're on it anyway too, so it doesn't change anything.
And we have a motion for Alan to go before.
Thank you.
All right.
Aye.
I'll talk to Mary. Thanks.
Um, any other papers left tonight?
Motion to...
Concludes.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That concludes this portion.